This time, I'd like to call the Hamilton County Council meeting to order. Madam Auditor, if you would please do a roll call.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Amy Maslamany.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Steve Nation.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. This time, I will give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance if you will all rise. You'll bow your heads and pray in your own way for a moment. Amen. Now, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've all had a chance to read, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for our June 1st, 2022 meeting.
Set move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, it's going to be a roll call vote. I will remind all council this evening, all votes will be done by roll call.
And I'm just going to say last names. Beaver.
Here, yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, is there anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, we will move on to committee and officer reports. President, that would be myself, I would like to acknowledge that Mayor Jensen of Noblesville is here with us this evening. Thank you for attending. And that's all I have. Vice President?
I have no comments.
Highway, we did meet?
We did, and there will be items discussed later in the agenda. There was a new project list that should be distributed here shortly, that you all get.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, finance.
We had no finance meeting, but Dawn, you want to get with Robyn, we probably need one in the next 30 days. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Personnel, we did not meet, and we will be addressing personnel issues on down further in our agenda. Miscellaneous, anybody have anything for miscellaneous?
I have nothing.
Saying none. We'll move right on to unfinished business. I don't think we have any, we'll move on to table business.
Motion to untable. The rate change.
Second. Before we go into vote, we know federal guidelines change for mileage reimbursement. As such, the county follows federal guidelines for that. So, that is the issue that was trying to be accommodated with this previous request is we understand to be already being accommodated with the new rate change.
So, at this point, we'll vote on the table, right? And then, from there, we'll, it'll die to lack of second.
So, you need a second?
No, we're good on this part, so we just need a roll call on the untabling.
Beaver.
Wait a minute, don't you have to, oh, we've already?
We're untabling right now, this motion to untable, so we have to approve that.
Do you need a second?
No, I apologize, Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was my mistake.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It dies for lack of second, we'll move forward. Moving on to new business, the first item is approval of vendor claims, it would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, Madam Monitor, we could do a roll call?
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the big stuff here, an interlocal agreement between the city of Noblesville and Hamilton County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second, discussion.
Are you, are you standing up for this particular project there, young man?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I peruse this real quick, the long and the short of it is, we're pledging $18 million for a bridge over White River, and we are not responsible for a bridge over Cicerop Creek.
Yes, it'd be a cap of 18 million. We will not be responsible for the bridge over Cicerop Creek, but upon construction, it will become part of our bridge inventory, so due to that, we will be involved in some of the approval process for designs.
That's all I have.
Anybody else?
And that, just so you know, that is listed in here on the projects list that the Highway Department has provided, so you'll see that.
All those in favor, if we could do a roll call, please.
Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Passes unanimous. Moving on to item C, it's an interlocal agreement between the city of Fishers and Hamilton County.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Who's standing up for this one? Anybody?
It has to do with the improvements that we talked, I guess I didn't talk to you all about this, but.
This is for, this is for a replacement of a wooden bridge, and here comes Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis, give me that Cliff Notes version, will you?
The city of Fishers has a federal aid project to work on from 106th to 116th. On that road is a timber, over timber structure that we are, through this agreement, we are going to be replacing. They have gotten the federal aid for that replacement, so our responsibility in this agreement is to only pay for the match with the construction of the bridge. So, it's a good deal for us, it's a bridge, it's a timber bridge, it's been hit multiple times, destroyed by a subway, a retail area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Madam Monitor, if we could do a roll call, please.
Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on your agenda, it's D, it's introduction, Hamilton County, Indiana, bridge improvement bonds. Please state your name.
Good evening, council members, my name is Dennis Sutton, I'm attorney with Bose McKinnon Evans, we're acting as bond counsel on this financing. I'll give a brief summary of the ordinance this evening, and I would also like to mention that in the audience with us tonight are Landon Bane and Josh Janock with Robert W. Baird and Company, that would be the underwriter for these bonds. We also have Oscar Gutierrez and Marielle Ruchewa Patacon. With the pond management, they are the municipal advisor. The ordinance reporting tonight proposes to authorize up to $47 million of county bridge improvement bonds in multiple series, and I believe the plan of finance is to issue one series of bonds, and then, if necessary, come back later on and issue a second series of bonds. The bonds will be paid from the nature of the bridge fund revenues, and then also as backup sources of funding local road and street and NVAH funds, and those are really being provided as a credit enhancement on the bond issue for purposes of the rating agency. The plan of finance is to, subject to the council's authorization, report with the rating on the bonds and be in a position to price the bonds sometime in September. The projects that are proposed to be funded are listed in Exhibit A of the bond ordinance. They're described as the Pleasant Street Bridge Project and the 146th Street Allisonville Road Project. The commissioners have met already, and they've given their approval. Statutorily, the ordinance can only be introduced tonight, and then will be up for a public hearing at the meeting next month. And the second item on the agenda that follows this one, you'll see, is an appropriation ordinance. The appropriation ordinance simply appropriates the proceeds of the bonds when they're issued. That ordinance as well is subject to a public hearing requirement. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and any of the members of the team here are also available for questions.
You got something, Sue?
I'll go ahead and state that, you know, this was always identified, these two projects were identified as major bridge projects for a long period of time. They were, the idea was to bond them independently, and as I understand, that by putting this together, there's a savings to the county. Is that accurate?
Oscar or Landon, do you want to describe them?
Yeah, so I think our timing requirement for the city of Noblesville, Landon Bane with Robert W. Baird, may precede the issuance of the Allisonville Bridge, set to be bid in or around December. Is that referred?
Yes, December shortly.
So, we hope to do everything as one issuance, but may separate it into two, if necessary.
The main question I have here, that many of the other two members that are on the finance committee have been working through the, the bridge fund for several months. Mike Royder has seen all this and has his blessing, there's nothing in these papers you put in front of us that he hadn't seen.
You got it, Brad. So, and to.
You guys are all nice guys, but we trust in Royder.
Yeah, and, so Mike, Mike has been our point of contact, and we've done this on a 15-year forecast basis, so we know we're accounting for all county needs, that at least we know our priorities and committed projects in the future, so.
Good enough.
Mike and our team, we set that up.
Okay.
And based on the knowledge that many projects have been coming in over budget because of the inflation that we're dealing with, the maximum that they've put in here is, is a little greater than what we had already been bookmarking for these projects. That allows us to go bid it, and if it does a little bit over, that we can still cover it without impacting tax rate and our tax levy for that.
How many millions is that?
How many millions more?
Mm-hmm.
Brad, you, you want to, so you have a 22 and a half to 28 and a half for that one, right?
We projected two different scenarios, and it's about $6 million difference between those.
So, if you do the 28 and a half plus the 18 and a half, that would be 46 and a half million, so that'd be two and a half.
So, you only got a million dollars?
Million and a half, but he's also built in the scenarios to have some savings opportunities.
I didn't hear that, you died off.
The, the, you have, you have money built into those different ideas for savings opportunities, is that right? It's a $6 million difference between the 22 and a half and the 28 and a half?
The $6 million difference is kind of what we figure as a worst-case scenario versus the, one of the stage three plans that we have, which are fairly well-refined and using some of the latest in the bid tax.
So, the, the $6 million is your contingency that you're already holding inside your project?
No, that's the, as you see, based on projections, it could be.
So, Brad, the, the contingency we've got on this is the amount of major bridge funds that we saved up until now.
The contingency is our cash.
Correct, so our plan is to only issue 34. We're authorizing up to 47 in the event that, you know, we hit a really excessive cost scenario, and we still proceed.
Okay, so, your engineer's estimate on the two are what, how much?
34.
That would be a broad question.
Pleasant Street, 146.
The 146 and Allisonville, currently we're right around 32.
Okay.
And our commitment to notice it was 18.
Okay.
And this bond, and then supplementing with approximately eight, nine million of cash in major bridge is what we hope will fund these projects.
Yeah, so we, Royder's got us using up to 11, 12 million.
Okay.
So, that's the, that's the gap.
That's the contingency.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and Brad, if you recall, the, the savings from major bridge has been very material in the past couple of years.
Savings.
Well, excess, excess surplus that's accumulated in cash, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure I'd identify that as saving, but I understand what you're saying. I'm fine with it, yeah.
Madam Auditor, do we need to vote on this as first reading, or just acknowledge?
Just acknowledge.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll be hearing additional appropriations, reductions, and transfer, and I would open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. First item, general funds requesting $60,000, available is $27,504,194. First item is the assessor, it's a 144 amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, Madam Auditor?
Brad Beaver.
Yes.
Sue Mackey.
Yes.
Amy Maslamany.
Yes.
Ken Alexander.
Yes.
Steve Schwartz.
Yes.
Steve Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, it's an auditor transfer of $9,000.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none?
Brad Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, the corner, ratifying start date of a 144 amendment approved by council at our June meeting. Oh, sorry about that.
Community corrections need some money.
Yeah, Ralph's here too, so I don't want to ignore him. Community corrections transfer, it's $31,000.
So move.
Second. This is covering overtime for, because of their inability to find people that fill vacant positions.
Madam Auditor?
Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to the corner, ratifying start date of their 144 amendment, it was approved by council at our June meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, it's court administration, there's 144 amendments.
You want to do A and B together?
Motion to combine.
So move.
Second.
Second. Yes.
Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Motion to approve A and B under court administration.
Second.
Beaver.
Yes.
Maslamany.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Nation.
Same amount of votes.
Yes.
Let's move on to buildings and grounds.
Wait a minute, you got this young lady.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, for, for court administration, I wanted to make sure that, because it wasn't clear if it was on in, in your materials or not, we're going to move Matt Etchison, who's with pretrial, is that in your materials?
As far as the.
Okay, it's not. So, we want, Matt Etchison is currently a pretrial screening analyst, and he's not going to see an increase in salary. What we want to do is move him from a grant-funded position to the county general position that's been vacated by Kristen Perry. So, we wanted to request that, please.
Which was done, it just indicated that it was vacant, it didn't indicate the name of who was moving into that role. Am I, is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
And Matt, Matt is currently, currently employed by pretrial, we just want to move him.
Can we do that without any more paperwork?
I don't know if that's even our issue.
We don't have to, it's, it was, we approved.
So, you guys do have to act, act on it, yes. It's a 144 amendment.
Well, we just, we just.
Does it got to come back next month, or can we just wing it?
No, you can, you can.
What's the guy's name?
Matt.
Matt Etchison.
I moved, we moved Matt.
Etchison for record.
Do we amend the, the?
A second for, for discussion.
Do we have to amend the motion to include the name, or?
That, that's what it sounds like, right? Because of the.
I would do it separately, because you've already voted.
We voted in groups, too. So, we'll just now approve the name, Matt.
Right.
Etchison.
Okay.
Into the position. Is there a second?
Did I get a second?
You got a second.
Now we got a second.
Yeah.
I made the motion.
I, I, I seconded it, it's all good. You seconded, we all are seconding.
How about a roll call vote, Madam Auditor?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Ken, I blame you for this. This was so fun.
Okay, now we're going to move on to buildings and grounds. There's an additional for sixty thousand. Mr. Wood is here.
Second.
Steve Nation wants sixty thousand dollars. Is that for, is that for the trail?
I will, in, in his absence, I'll just, Steve, do you want to come forward? But in essence, this is to demolish the site, prep it, and get, make it safe. And we've, he's gone through a process of getting quotes, and he is just setting-
Where's it at, Steve?
Six, five thirty-five, it's on the, on Old Cherry Road, six thirty-five, forty-seven, you go down the hill, that place on the left. You have the old condemned house that, up there, and another condemned house in there, and you have the storage area and tires lined to the backside.
Brad, this is the, the site, proposed site for the women's shelter.
I was just asked to get prices to demo it, so I've been out, we got quotes for it, we got reasonable quotes for it.
We have, we have money set aside for that, that project, don't we?
Just the land and the, but not the demolition of the firm.
That, that project is set up on our, on our list, but we have, we have not determined where that money's coming from.
Since there's structures on now county owned land, we probably need to address that because it's a hazard.
We, 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 we're, our issues, we need to take care of it.
I do have a question for you. Since there is a historic structure and potentially structures on that land, and I have not gone into the buildings, are there any, has anyone looked into doing salvage outside of those buildings for maybe some old, some wood floors, mantles, crown molding, et cetera?
I will tell you this, they have not been maintained for many years, except just falling down inside.
Okay, so there's nothing worth salvaging?
It needs to be tore down, it's a safety hazard, it's definitely-
Not questioning that, it's just that there's something of value that's building that old to get it out of there.
Typically, the demolition contractors will actually, when they do an analysis of the building, they'll go in and, and review it, and say, yeah, I'll tear it down, and they will take anything that's of value, of salvage value, and take care of it.
Okay.
That's pretty simple.
I've demoed a lot of older homes to get material added over the years myself. This one's there.
That's due now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, prosecutor has a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to probation, there's also a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
While discussing this, I believe there's going to be, in probation, isn't there going to be some items that are going to be coming up from our KPMG study on that?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
I would make a motion that you put all three of the Hamilton County Airport Authority's reduction together.
I think there's all four, right?
There's four, I believe.
Is it four?
Yes.
Ah, there is. Yes, four.
So the motion is to combine items ten, B through E?
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All seconded, all seconded.
Discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to- Nope, I'm sorry. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Brad, this is, we're just closing out this fund, right, these funds?
Yeah.
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, on page three of your agenda, Fund eleven nineteen, it's Clark Preparation Fund, transfer of fifty-
Wait a minute. We did one, two, three, four reductions for the airport authority?
We did, we combined D through E.
Oh, you went all the way down, okay. And did you get the transfers to a dollar fifty?
We did all that.
That's all included.
That was all included, sir.
It's all included, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all good. It's Fund eleven nineteen, Clark Prep, can't spit it out tonight. Fund transfer, it's fifteen hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion here? Hearing none?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item G, it's Fund eleven twenty-two, it's project income, it's a transfer for fifteen thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item H on your agenda, it's Fund eleven forty-eight, requesting fifty-eight thousand and eight dollars and thirty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Okay. Item I, it's Fund twelve twenty-two, it's Public Safety Communications, it's a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This is filling a gap until they find the new director, so it will, as I understand, at that thing, when they, when that new director's found, there will go back to the existing, the pay scale before this.
What are the employees just running wild now? Do they have any direction at all?
No, there's, there's direction.
They're moving things forward.
They're moving, trust, no. It's not barely, it's, they're still doing their job.
Okay, good, feel better.
You should.
Beaver?
Yeah.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item J, it's Fund twelve twenty-nine, it's a Loet Special Distribution, requesting two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Steve, who's making that request?
The highway's making that request.
This is grant money that, that, that needs to be spent. They're going to be using it to offset paving inflation, escalation costs, so that they don't have to come back to council for those things later. So this money's going to that, for that use.
Open every move.
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item K on your agenda, it's Fund twelve thirty-five, it's a lit dedicated to the PSAP. They're requesting two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and eighty-five cents.
So moved.
Second. Remember how I said people were doing their jobs?
Mr. Horine's here in front of us.
I'm Horan, I serve as the project manager for the nine one one center. Before you today, we have an additional appropriation request. This funding request is needed to satisfy essentially four change orders that were found during our process of going through accounts and zeroing them out, changing contact information, seeing what pieces and parts were outstanding. We found these four change orders. It represents about three hundred and fifty-nine, three hundred and seven thousand in total charges. There is a credit on there, and so the total additional appropriation request is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight, ten, eighty-five. We're just split amongst those three lines that you see on that additional appropriation request. This, as a point of reference, the original contract was entered in October of twenty thirteen. These change orders were executed in eleven, excuse me, November of twenty fifteen and December of twenty fifteen. We found some correspondence that dated back to twenty eighteen where they were trying to satisfy them. And it went all the way through twenty twenty, and much like a lot of other things in twenty twenty, it fell off the face of the earth. We brought it back to life in twenty twenty-two, met on June third with Dan Stevens and Mike Thayer. Mike Thayer serves as the president, co-founder of a company called Delta Works. They were engaged as our consultant and project manager for the Hamilton County side of the original Motorola project. Collectively, we agree that these change orders have been satisfied. I know that one of them was still outstanding within the last twelve months, but it has been accomplished. So we believe that by signing these change orders as being completed, it's going to create essentially an invoice. This additional appropriations needed to satisfy that, those invoices when they come in. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
No questions.
Well, just out of curiosity, so the change order, and I know that this is probably something that maybe you don't have the depths of details on, but the, the change orders that were directed, were they directed by the county to this, this company?
Yeah, it took us to Motorola, so yes, they-
So, and then, and we did that without having the, the, the contract in place, or it was just a running total?
Yeah, so the, the contract was in place. These were change orders on that original contract, which, which created an invoice. They haven't been signed off on.
I, I, I get that, but the work is, so we, we directed them to do the work?
Yep.
And, and then the work was completed?
Yes.
And then we're just wrapping up paperwork at this point?
Yes, sir.
From years ago.
I, yeah, trust me, I, I picked up on that.
Thank you for finding it.
Any further questions for Mr. Horan?
Yeah, I have a question. Is our Fisher's branch operational?
It is. We, we have equipment there. My office is stationed out of there. We have-
Is it completed?
No, sir. That was last month's additional, it was grant money, so we can complete it.
What estimate do you have on that, any?
Moving forward.
Yeah, but, but I remember when we bought the place, and that's been, what, a day or two ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a new world.
Any further questions for Mr. Horan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Auditor?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item L on your agenda, Fund forty-five ninety-eight dash forty-three oh five, it's the Ninety-Sixth Street TIFT. It's the one, it's a project on Hundred Forty-Sixth Street. They're requesting one million, three hundred thousand.
So moved.
Second.
This is just to finish the phases. The money was approved, we encumbered those funds last year. We'll actually be spending them this year. Any further questions?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to M on your agenda, it's Fund forty-nine oh five, it's the digital ortho photography. They're requesting seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to N on your agenda, it's Fund forty-nine oh seven, it's Special Highway. First item is a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Item two is a transfer for thirty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to O on your agenda, it's Fund eight-two-seven-five-nine-three-dash-three-five-four, it's workforce development, COAG. It's a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none?
Beaver?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
Schwartz? Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item P, it's Fund 8950, it's the ARPA. We'll start with, uh, item one, it's a transfer for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
So moved. Second.
Uh, Todd, are you here to talk on this?
Yes, sir.
We've got these three transfers here. What does transfer mean?
So how we originally set it up, uh, Robin set it up, we put it all in sixty-one hundred. And then when the project get approved by the committee, we transfer it out of sixty-one hundred into that specific project line item. So each of these that you'll see right here will be moving out of line item sixty-one hundred, which is where the pot of money is, and we're taking out and putting into project-specific lines.
Okay. So I don't really have a problem with this first one, but the second two is where you actually get into big money. Now, once you do that, it takes no more council appropriation?
Correct.
I would suggest to you that we don't do that with two and three.
Why is that?
One is what's on the table right now, I'm, I'm just saying.
They would still have to come forward to pay. The money would be in the account, but they wouldn't be able to move on it until.
You'd have to, you'd have to approve the claims, yes.
Yes.
What did I just ask you, Todd? Did I not ask you if it took any other council appropriation once it moves?
You did.
And what did you say?
I said no.
And then what did you just say to him?
That you'll have to approve the claims.
Okay, so whi- which one is the truth?
It's two different things.
Both the truth.
Once these get moved, do they need any more council appropriation?
Council action.
Not council appropriation, no.
Not a council appropriation, they just.
What do they need?
Council actual approval. You'll have to approve the claims.
You mean after it's spent?
Yes.
That's what I'm getting to.
So.
Um, the first, let, let's go ahead and vote on the first one.
Let's go ahead with the first.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the first one? Hearing none, Madam Auditor.
Beaver?
Yes.
Maslamani?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Passes. Now.
So on the next two, what I'm saying to you, okay, it moves out of, you appropriated in ARP, it's been through ARP, we looked at. I know what, but there, there's no project. Okay, there, there's, there's no contract. It's just, here's two and a half million dollars.
Are you, you referring to two or three?
Why?
We talk about it at times.
Yeah, let's move, let's start with item two, it's a transfer. It's a transfer of twenty-five million dollars addressing Baker's Corner.
This is the water and sewer project that's underway and engineering.
Yeah, the, the design, the plan's underway, there, there is nothing to pay for.
There, so, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying. We've all stated that, that we want to move and get this ARPA dollars appropriated and off of our plate, so we don't have to deal with this any longer.
Well, I, I disagree, I disagree with that.
This is a project.
Thinking altogether.
Okay, this is a project that's been identified as one of the number one projects for the county. We have moved to spend millions of dollars to move that forward, and we have a committee that's been put up, put in place to oversee the development of that project. And I don't know if Commissioner, uh, wants to, to mention anything about the project or, uh, or, uh, legal counsel. I don't know if you guys want to talk about the Baker's Corner project, at least from a procedural and process standpoint?
I'm in favor of Baker's Corner project.
He wants to be able to have oversight on how it's being spent specifically.
But you're, you're greenlighting twenty-five million dollars.
I understand what he's saying.
And no, no idea what the bids are going to come in at, and, and if they come in at right, what if they go over? There's another ten million dollars in carrying costs that the county's pledged to in the big picture of the Baker's Corner project. What happens if they go over?
Well, that, that's, maybe we could have, uh, uh, counsel or what, what's, what's the timeline on that and the, and the need to have this appropriated?
Uh, so right now, they're going through the scoping period with, uh, Wesler Engineering and our, uh, design team is going through the scoping period with Reynolds Construction. Uh, once they get to sixty percent, uh, design, that's when Reynolds will give us a guaranteed maximum price, which is one of the reasons why we're making use of the BOT procurement method. Uh, it shifts a lot of the, the risk to the private develop, and I use developer, that's just the statutory term for it, the construction company, Reynolds. And that's why we chose it so, except once they get to that sixty percent, they, they're a nationwide construction company, they're dealing with the market just like everyone else is, and their best guess at sixty percent is what they will walk themselves into.
When do you expect that?
Uh, I believe, and I'll, I'll double check, but I think, I think we're about forty-five to sixty days away from that. It could, plus or minus fifteen days, I, I can, I can.
I, I don't have any problem paying the guys doing the work. I just am not comfortable cutting loose the twenty-five million, not knowing.
Is this twenty-five million cover any of the pre-construction costs that are being carried?
Yes, it will, um, and the estimates that, uh, Wesler has given to us, um, they were truly conservative at the time, but, um, and it does include design and some other, you know, professional services that are going towards it. Um, so it's not all just for twenty-five million for the construction, it's for the project cost total. Um, so yes, part of that, those, those funds be used for, uh.
I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but, um, they, they had a breakout and a fixed cost for pre-construction for this, which included design as well as their laborers estimating all the other costs that go into it. And then the G, once the GMP is established, that is the second half of the, of the contract.
Yes, that, that'll be, at that point, um, uh, the ARPA committee, you guys and the commissioners can all, uh, decide that guarantee maximum price. A lot of negotiation obviously will be something you guys are willing to, uh, get into. Um, so we do have breaking off points that if we get to that point, we can separate and go, you know, our own ways, but.
The last question, I guess, for, for my benefit would be, money has been set aside for this project. It was, you know, whether it was land or some early engineering, has that money been expended? And this twenty, and part of this twenty-five million dollars is needed to finish the, the remaining part recon?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And aside from that too, we have, uh, we will be receiving, uh, ten million dollars from IFA, state ARPA funds too, um, here shortly as well, so.
Further questions?
My statement still stands. Vote any way you want to, you're cutting loose with twenty-five million dollars and you don't know if it's a go, not go. What happens to the twenty-five million if the estimates come back and it's way over and we're not going with the project, then what happens?
The bot delivery is that they have to design to a budget. Just like the, we did with the garage.
What if it don't?
Just like we did with the garage, the, the whole concept of that, of that construction delivery method is to lock in a budget and then work through the details to, to get a fixed cost that you can move forward with.
Brad, what, what are you suggesting that they proceed in this with the Baker's Corner project?
I, I would, I would be happy to pay for the design cost. I am not happy to give them all the money for all the project, and we haven't even seen any kind of estimate yet. It's a guesstimate at this point. I'm for the project.
I, 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 I think, I, I, I understand what you're, I, I understand what, I understand the concept of what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I, I, I believe that, you know, from my perspective, there's a committee and a direction that's.
I'm on the committee.
Right, he is on the committee.
The ARPA committee.
I'm, I'm, I'm shooting the flare up for you, okay?
There's a committee on what, Ken?
There's a, there's, we, we established a committee that was going to be a place to oversee the Baker's Corner project.
I understand that part, but I, I, I do agree in the sense of when we look at it, think about any project we've done that we've built. We have not allocated money on a hope and a wish and a prayer that it's going to come back. I, I know in my career I have not. So if we're looking at it, we look at estimates, a proposal comes back, it's no different than what we talked about with the women's shelter. We're not going to just say, yep, here's ten million dollars, we hope you get it done.
See, I, I, I agree, I understand what you're saying, but I, I, I don't think that's accurate, accurate. State Route Thirty-seven is a prime example.
They at least came back with a proposal of what everything looks like from schematics, from design.
They, they, they have provided that, we've already went through that process. We've already seen all that information at the last meeting.
Sixty percent of design though, I mean, you.
And the one, the difference between State Route Thirty-seven, which is where we didn't have a cap, this one we have a cap cost with the bond.
And we made a, we made a quite a large mistake on State Road Thirty-seven.
That's what I'm saying, this one caps and says you have to design up to this amount of money.
Can't we appropriate this money with the contingency that, that we ever, um, that they come back before council at that sixty percent point and see what the.
That's what I.
Bot is? Can we do that in that way?
Yeah, then, once we get the sixty percent design and have that, at that point, we get that guaranteed maximum price, the idea is that our procedural will do is, as I said, bring it back to the ARPA committee, bring it back to you guys and the commissioners. So it's not, um, it's not once we get it, they'll go for it, right? It's they have to come back, part of the BOT procurement method, they have to come back to the governing bodies to present that and, um, at that point, you guys will go.
So why do we need to transfer then the twenty-five million today? Why wouldn't we wait forty-five to sixty days when the six, when you were talking about that it would be at sixty percent of, I guess, I, that's.
Sixty percent design of the whole project and estimates.
Yeah, I guess that, that's the part that I'm.
Well, how mu- how much are we obligated right now of the twenty, ten million? Five million?
Are we obligated to any certain amount right now that we owe outstanding?
I, yes, for some of the design and some of the legal and some of the other great consulting stuff, we do have, uh, invoices for those. Those are part of the, the pre-construction stuff. I do not know them off the top of my head, I am sorry, I was not, I, I.
I should know what our payment terms are.
Nowhere near, nowhere near five million, wait, not, not, nowhere near a million, I, I'm so far with that, I, uh, I don't know what.
I think I should wait until.
Already appropriated separately? In, in that already appropriated separately?
That was the initial.
Kind of study, that was the initial part of it, that was in the first round.
So, yeah, so we hired a designer that worked to go and get a, a study, a conceptual level of documents put together. At that point in time, went to ARP, uh, it was said, yes, let's move forward with this, this is the estimated cost, this is what we'll cap it at. Presentations were given and, and they said, and we went out with an RFP, that RFP came back where, um, the different responders provided a number for their pre-construction costs, as well as a breakout for how they would go about a fee for the construction moving forward. So we are, the part that has not been funded, as I understand based on what I'm hearing and I think, is that the pre-construction cost for what they're doing now, which is the construction level documents that they have to do, as well as the estimating and any kind of early procurement that might be, be in, in place so that they can move the project forward. I, I understand the, the concept here, I think we have checks and balances in place, um, and we do this with other projects.
I guess, again, though.
We, we just did it with, uh, with Steve Wood on sixty-five, uh, sixty.
Why are we transferring it today? But we have forty-five to sixty days where we just, we'll get to sixty percent of the design. Like, I, that's the part that I guess, why is it on the agenda today and we won't, we just wait until we see it and then say, perfect, great, you followed instructions beautifully? I guess that's the part that I'm having a struggle with. Can you help me understand what the timeline?
I, I'm trying to, I, I, I hear what you're saying, I, they have to come back in front of us, and if it were to go above what we've appropriated, they'd have to come back in front of this body before they even entered a contract.
It's not necessary, okay? I don't know if we're just maybe not.
I think, I mean, I think.
Is there harm in waiting forty-five to sixty days until we have that?
Outside of paying the invoices we received, uh, not, not paying those ones, I, I do not believe. I mean, I, I think we should pay the invoices that we received, and again, I'm sorry, I do not know what the number, dollar amount is off, off the top of my head, but, um.
Do we have payment terms, is it thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
What we, what we could do is find it with the pre-construction costs, and if that's what you're saying, then we could dictate that that's the amount that you want to appropriate today.
Right. I, I, I'm comfortable with that.
That, 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 that's what, that's what comes down to. Do we know what that, that price is or value?
I think they roughly did, I.
Is it over half a million dollars?
Yeah, I think it was.
It was like seven hundred.
So the motion.
Go ahead.
So I'll tell you, a million dollars, a motion.
We already have a motion on the table.
Okay, good.
Okay.
You can do a motion.
You can amend your, you can amend.
They made the motion.
At this point, I'd have forgot. I think, I think I did.
I didn't have it.
Okay, let's start over here.
No, no, I know, I, I, I know, I made the motion.
Chris has something to say.
Then you can amend it.
I don't want to amend it.
You don't want to amend it, okay, then.
Who's second?
I probably, I could.
We have to need to be cautious here because if this gets voted down, then it will be one year before it comes back in front of us. So make sure you're all aware of the buttons you're pushing.
You can also supersede that rule as well, but.
If I second, can I amend?
You can rescind your second.
Okay, I descend it. I withdraw my second.
Have we finished with any discussion?
Now.
So we have a motion and there's not been a second, so motion dies for lack of a second.
Motion to approve a million dollars for the transfer and we can table the twenty-four million for.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
You don't have, this, this is not for this place.
No.
I don't know how this process works.
Understood.
It's okay. Madam Auditor, please.
Brad Beaver?
Yes.
Maslamani?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Connor, um, so you, are you handling the invoices on this particular thing?
Uh, they usually either come to either myself or, um, I think some might go to Diana, but I can, I can make sure they all come through.
Okay.
Uh, myself and I'll.
That, that's fine, as long as a million dollars covers them for sixty days.
Absolutely.
We don't want to go, anybody go without paying.
No, I understand, so.
Understand? Okay.
Okay, let's move on to item three. It's a transfer for two point five million dollars under affordable housing.
Same question here.
Is there a motion?
I'm not making a motion, I'm bringing up the same question with this particular item.
We can't discuss until it's a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion.
All right. Two point five million dollars, I'm not opposed to the affordable housing thing. Who gets the money?
There is a, uh.
And will this be the last time we have a vote on this?
There's another two and a half.
Yeah, there's another two and a half million earmarked from the next round that we have appropriated.
Okay, so if that one, if, if it all farts apart, we've already appropriated the two point five. We're appropriating.
Yeah, so they can start the study and work on, in whatever, um, avenue that the Housing Collaborative needs.
I understand all that.
N two Ramsey with.
Understand all that, I'm on the ARPA committee.
Are there current invoices or study information, I mean, as far as the, because you guys have seen all the information, we get the minutes, right? And so if we're reading through the minutes, it's great.
We have to expect that the ARPA committee is putting forward directions that are ones that we can move forward, right?
Well, it's just not, it's not a system that can, it's really not.
We still have to have substantial information to approve.
I, I understand, I, I mean, but that's why the committee's in place.
Hmm, so the.
That's in your mind.
And I, and I, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I agree, that there should be a document here of what, a contract or with the, the organization that is doing the study and what the funds specifically are going for.
That, that's really what I'm getting to, is that, is that instead of these big chunks of money, at least when it gets to the council or somebody has to come in, we need twenty thousand dollars to do this, this and this. But just to drop two point five million and hope you did, do what we told you to.
I, I, I completely agree with you.
Yes.
I want to have the, I want to have contracts and things in place.
I totally agree with you.
Um, you know, the one we just, that we, that we changed a second ago, there is a contract in place. I don't know if there's one on this, but I would assume that the ARPA committee has gone through that process.
I could tell you as a rotating member, I have not seen a final for this on the.
Or, or, or even an MOU, okay.
So what action would council like to take?
We already have a motion to approve the two and a half.
I guess my question would be to Connor, because obviously you're in on this one as well.
You're getting your steps set.
You're earning your money, sir.
You're the punching bag tonight.
That's all right.
So, can you?
There's no, there's no documentation that I'm missing, right, on this affordable housing? I know we got people working on it, but there has been no contract set firm price. Who's doing what for how much money?
No, and just so I have it understanding correctly, you're referring to the two point five million for affordable housing, that's the additional two point five, so five million.
Five million total, yeah.
Uh, so the Housing Collaboration is the one who made the request for it. It's, I recently found out, it's not an official entity, but several interested parties.
From back, everybody.
They, they're in the process of drafting an RFP to, uh, seek proposals for what a, a private developer would, how they could make use of the five million for affordable housing. Um, they've made some, they, they gave us a foundation and I, they gave it to us and we're working on it. And so we haven't finished it yet, we want to discuss that with the ARPA committee to make sure that the ARPA committees are as comfortable with it, and the idea would be, once the RFP is issued, it'd be similar to other, uh, uh, like committees where we could have members of the council, commissioners and maybe outside experts, and they would be the ones evaluating the proposals that you would receive and ju- grade them individually and then provide a recommendation to the ARPA committee, you guys, commissioners. Uh, so no, there's nothing official out there yet, as far as I know.
There again, I, I'm not opposed to the affordable housing, but we're not at the point to appropriate two point five million dollars.
Motion to table.
We already have a motion second on.
A motion to table supersedes everything on the table.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on.
When do you think, when do you think that you would have, our general timeframe of, of that RFP that you were speaking of?
When, when is the, I'm sorry, when is the next ARPA committee meeting?
We're not meeting again till August, are we?
Yeah, August eighth.
It, it will, a draft of it will be sent to.
It's August, isn't it, Sue?
Yes, it is August, it's, I'm looking up the date, I was just looking.
So by then?
Yeah, and we'll send you a, a rough draft before too and everything, you know, so, once it's.
Okay. Okay.
Twelve, August twelve.
Neither, neither one of these, these, uh, projects I'm opposed to, but I have, I've only missed one ARPA meeting since we started, and I'm trying to get across to my other members, it ain't as smooth and worked out as you might think that it is. Oh, I, I, money's getting appropriated and then it moves to a different direction and, and once it's past appropriation, we got no, nothing else in the fight.
And I don't have any problem with the affordable housing or Baker's Corner either, but I agree with Brad.
Well, let's move on to our agenda.
A motion to combine grants, uh, items Q one through Q eight.
Second.
Moved in second, Ed. Madam Auditor.
Brad Beaver?